The time I have is 6:32 on this June 27th, 2017. I have here the agenda for a city council special call meeting. And the first order of business is to call the order, so that's what I'm doing right now, calling the meeting to order. And the second, agenda item number two is conduct a public hearing regarding a voluntary annexation request by the owner agent of a 16.27 acre property being described as part of the James McKinney survey, abstract number 770, Grayson County, Texas, and being a part of Graywood Heights in addition to Grayson County, Texas, as recorded in volume seven, page 87, Platte records, Grayson County, Texas, and being a part of Graywood Heights, section two, to the city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, as recorded in volume eight, page 70 of said Platte records, and being a part of the tract of land described in a deed to Keratex LP elevens, recorded in Grayson County or County Clerk file number 2010-21778, real property records, Grayson County, Texas, generally located south of Spence Road, east of Sanford Circle, west of Graywood Drive, and north of Blasename Avenue. Do you have any questions or comments from the public? I see no hands. Second call for questions or comments from the public. Still no hands.
Excuse me, ma'am, I just wanted to identify, we do have an annexation service plan for the property, and I have several copies here, I'm just gonna place on the table if anyone would like to look. I'm trying to read them out, whichever you prefer.
Basically, that's a list of the services that the city would provide to anyone that wants their property annexed. I'll let her pass those out. Call for questions again. All right, and so, third and last call for questions or comments regarding agenda item number two from the public. Any comments or questions from the council regarding this yet? We'll cover it again in a minute. All right. And so, the third item is adjournment of this 6:30 PM session, and then we will call the next meeting to order. Is there a motion? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, and a second, all in favor of adjournment at this time. It is unanimous, so we will adjourn the 6:30 PM meeting, and the time is 6:36. And so, at 6:36 on this 27th of June, 2017, I have another agenda for another city council special call meeting. And the first item is called order, that's what I'm doing now. Second item, agenda item number two, public hearings. Conduct a public hearing regarding a voluntary annexation request by the owner agent of a 16.27 acre property, being described as part of the James McKinney survey, abstract number 770, Grayson County, Texas, and being a part of Graywood Heights in addition to Grayson County, Texas, as recorded in volume seven, page 87, Platte records, Grayson County, Texas, and being part of Graywood Heights, section two, to the city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, as recorded in volume eight, page 70 of said Platte records, and being part of the tract of land described in a deed to Keratex LP elevens, recorded in County Clerk file number 2010-21778, real property records, Grayson County, Texas, generally located south of Spence Road, east of Sanford Circle, west of Graywood Drive, and north of Blasename Avenue. So regarding item number two in this public hearing, once again, are there any comments or questions?
Isn't this the same property that you just discussed for the meeting?
No, it's not. It's not the same, or is it part of it?
It's a portion of it.
It is a portion. It's a portion of it. Any other questions, comments? All right, that's the second call. Third and last call for comments, questions from the public.
How does this fit within the master plan for Van Alstine, or does it?
Pardon me?
How does this fit within the master plan for Van Alstine?
Well, I think it was, it was platted as mostly a single-family residential, but there was some multifamily too. This was, and I'm not sure where it divides, this was just discussed in the meeting of the planning and zoning, though that was a bigger piece of property that contains a smaller piece of property. To tell you the truth, I'm not sure how much of it used to be, or still is actually, that request was denied by the planning and zoning commission. But it's mixed. I think it's mostly single-family residential, some multifamily, some, was it duplex? Two-family?
Two-family.
Okay. So, does that help you? Does that answer your question? And third and last call for questions or comments. All right, seeing no hands, we'll move on to items for consideration. Item number three, consider taking the action necessary regarding hiring a community development corporation director and the city entering into an interlocal agreement with the VACDC, that's the Van Alstine Community Development Corporation, related to funding such a position. All right, is anyone prepared to speak on that? Do you want to say anything? Colin?
Hi, I'm Colin Flynn, the president of the CDC. And, you know, we've been without a director for some time now, I guess it was the end of April, that our, the person who's handling that position, which was not titled director at the time, resigned. So we've been going through a number of special call meetings in an effort to find an applicant. We had six applications and held three interviews for the director position. We feel like, you know, in all this, we've found the perfect candidate who's gonna really be there and help us out. So we stand strongly behind our candidate, Rodney Williams, who's here today. As far as the city employment goes, you know, 18 months ago, we had one person who was handling the CDC and the EDC. It was a different world here in Van Alstine, you know, two years ago. There'd been a lot of growth since then, and a lot of responsibility for that individual would be. So, since that time, the EDC now has a director. And they, this is all new territory for the EDC, the CDC, and the city. The city employed the director so that they can provide benefits and could go through the process of background checks and go through the standards that the city goes through in hiring their employees. We felt that that adds value for what we're trying to do for the city, the community development corporation, to utilize the professionalism and what they're doing in their evaluation of employees. So we thought that was a good option for us. The EDC again is ahead of us in this. They've already had an agreement with the city. They've been through some, you know, it's evolving. And, you know, as we learn of things that are working and aren't working, which I don't know the details of it, you know, where with our director going to be able to benefit from what they're going through, so that we ultimately have a perfect scenario here where the employee is managed and all, you know, operations that will be at the board level, but that we're able to provide benefits that the city can provide their employees. One of the thoughts were, should we approach a third-party provider for benefits? And after further discussion with the board, you know, the city has a number of employees, and they're very competitive with what benefits they're able to provide. Because, you know, this is all coming out of the CDC budget, we want to be sure that, you know, we're good stewards of the funds that are available to us. And we feel like our best option today is to follow that EDC's agreement and have the city handle the payroll and be a city employee providing benefits, but the CDC board will handle all of the day-to-day management of that director.
Any questions, comments, yourself?
Yes. You did not mention that the CDC would reimburse the city for all the costs that the employee incurred, that is in respect, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions, and this has nothing to do with your choice of candidate. It really has nothing to do with your board, but my question is, you waited all this time, why did you feel that it was necessary to go do this at a special call meeting? And when did you present a written request to be on the agenda, since we got one and a corrected one?
Well, it's been, I'm not gonna pretend that this has not been a huge challenge for the CDC without having a director or a person, an employee who can assist us with all the things that we're doing. So, we've had a number of special call meetings, we've got members who are coming in to the office during the week, or taking away from their day-to-day positions, and really going above and beyond. I'm so proud to be a part of this board for their efforts in this time. We had a special call meeting where we voted that Rodney Williams was the right man for this job, and that we would move forward with the hiring process, and in that, we understood that city council had to be the ultimate vote. So, between the last CDC meeting and this meeting, we were made aware of this meeting because Wayne Womack is on P&amp;Z, he was at a P&amp;Z meeting, was able to talk to Jennifer Gould when he found out about this special call meeting, and it became an opportunity for us to proactively try to get ahead of the, you know, get this done sooner than later. You know, in our opinion, you know, the sooner, we would have hired Rodney, you know, way earlier, but, you know, we had six, we had six applications, three interviews, and it just took time to find the right one. And once we did, we saw this as an opportunity to move forward and really start putting our, you know, plans into action for the CDC.
But when did you submit your request? Your written request as required for anything that goes on the council agenda?
Yeah, the initial request was made verbally by Wayne Womack to Jennifer Gould, letting her know that we would like to look into getting on the agenda for the special call meeting regarding our director and our admin. That was on the 21st, the last P&amp;Z meeting. Frank Baker called me the next day and asked me, confirmed, is this the intention by the board to go before city council at the next city council, at the special call meeting? I said yes, and so, at that point, Jennifer proceeded with the request. I didn't, I guess if there is a requirement that every submittal be in writing, I wasn't aware of that, and I felt that in an effort to continue working together, it's a benefit of being with the CDC board, we're work closely with the city, we work closely with city council, we work closely with the EDC, and we can try to get things done effectively. This was just an opportunity for us to get in front of y'all and try to really get the...
So you were not made aware that you needed to submit a written request for this, or that we needed a packet that stated that the board had approved what was being presented to the council of the minutes, approved minutes?
I mean, I felt that Jennifer Gould could do the request. I mean, if it needed to be for me, no, I was not aware that it had to be in writing. But we felt that we were taking all the right steps to, again, proactively move forward. Our board voted in our meeting, and all this was done as it's supposed to in board, in the board, and so, we felt like we've been following the rules here and doing as we're expecting.
So, then you were never even aware that you needed to submit a written request, as other boards are required to do?
No, I guess, I guess not. I mean, we, no.
Usually they are required to make a written request, and on it you must list, and you want it worded on the agenda. And each board that does that, you must also submit the minutes of the board to show that you, that the board did vote, and this is how they wanted it worded, and that they approved. This is not against CBC board, this is a matter of, if one board is required to follow a procedure, then all boards should be required to follow the same procedure.
If there's a procedure...
And that is what my question is in regard to this, as we did not, the only thing we got was to request, and then the employment agreement from each one. And I also have another question. This is not totally covered in the bylaws. Did you make a, has an attempt been made to change the bylaws and correct them according to the way you're, the employee is to be done?
We have not made any amendments to the bylaws.
I noticed in this that the council has, in the bylaw section one, at page two, the employee can be removed from office by the city, but in euro service agreement, even though that this is a city employee, the council has no say in any of that. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I have to refer to it. Is that the agreement that's in place with the EDC and the city that we're mirroring?
This is, this is what you gave us, the city employment service agreement that was sent to us. I assume that this is, this is, I don't know if you can read it up. I do know that I read this, and it was an email from Julie Ford, which is our attorney, and that you asked her to review this request, and she did state that one council member has asked for the legality of the VAE/EDC agreement, and I assume the same legality questions will arise about this agreement. Do you not think it would be advisable to wait until those questions are answered before this is continued?
There are, you know, we...
And this is not my words, this is from Julie Ford.
You know, we were, again, following the lead of the EDC and the city, and in an effort to continue moving forward and finding the perfect fit, we voted to follow the same agreement. So if there was any legal questions regarding the EDC and city agreement that are pending that could potentially change the way the agreement is written, then we definitely need to be aware of that, and we don't want to, you know, our idea is not to cause any kind of problems. We see the benefit of utilizing the city's services here, where they're available, and if there's details in the agreement that are concerned to the attorney, then we need to know about that.
Would it be a hardship on you in any way if this, these two actions were postponed and tabled until the regular council meeting?
I mean, it's, you know, I've got...
We're talking about what, a week, then two weeks at the very most?
I've got most of the board here tonight. Rodney's here, and he has a current job that he's, you know, where he's working. Part of the concern that I had for him is, once we go to city council and your name goes out there, you know, he's gotta explain it to his employer that he's been looking at another job. I think that puts him in a tough spot. I understand what your concerns are, but I also feel that we have such a well-rounded board, we've got a city council member on our board, a P&amp;Z member, and a number of other outstanding citizens, and we've really looked at all of our, you know, we've put a lot of thought and effort into this. If there's any issues regarding the agreement, those can be worked out. I mean, you know, I think it'd be our opinion that we, if at all possible, move forward and get going here with the CDC, and if there's any issues with the agreement on how it's handled, that we handle that as we move, as we go forward. That's just my opinion. If anybody from the CDC would like to speak on that note, that's my opinion, and after a meeting with the board for so many meetings, I think they would all agree.
Anyone else have questions?
I have a question. With the position of the CDC, whoever that was, administrator, now director, roles and responsibilities of that position, I believe, kind of changed a little bit over time, so if you could just kind of describe the role and responsibility of this role, of this position?
Yeah. There with me a second here. The roles and responsibility of the community development director have, they've gone up. It's a bigger job today. Van Alstine's growing, you know, we've seen the things that the economic development director has done regarding industrial and manufacturing, and trying to bring job creations here to Van Alstine. The Community Development Corporation is focused on improving the quality of life here. We've got a number of outstanding projects with shade programs over parks for the kids to, you know, keep them from getting sunburned, facade infrastructure programs, hike and bike trails. And in addition to that, seeing where the community is, are we missing retail? You know, we've lost our hardware store, for instance. You know, it's gonna be our responsibility, director's responsibility, to see what we're missing in Van Alstine, such as a hardware store, proactively go target those type of operators and try to bring them to Van Alstine. Hardware store is one example, but that would be on a retail and commercial kind of basis. So I'll just read the summary of our job description for our director. "To provide leadership of the Community Development Corporation. The CDC is a not-for-profit organization incorporated to provide programs, offer services, and engage in other activities that promote and support Van Alstine. Specifically, it's tasked with developing the retail and commercial space of Van Alstine in addition to providing for improvements to the city, such as parks, green space, bike trails, et cetera. Duties include working with new businesses, including commercial, office, and retail, doing all we can to attract them to Van Alstine. The director will be responsible for bringing in retail commercial businesses to the city, budgeting, marketing, prospect development, negotiations, business retention, oversee administrative assistance, and appropriate reporting of activities to the stakeholders and board." So, that's maybe a little more than you asked for, but...
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Flynn, is your, your bylaws, they don't in any way preclude your hiring person, do they? I mean, they don't say that you can, they just don't address it either way, is that correct?
You know, I don't have the bylaws in front of me, I believe that is correct.
I've got something, I've got something I need to read for my company over here. Susan, Suzanne can't be here today, so she asked me to read this for city council, for the council's information. Suzanne Crowell cannot be here tonight, but has asked that I read this statement to you with regards to the agenda item, items on hiring the two CDC employees. "Because the council has not received job descriptions, salary information, or had time to review the contractual agreement between EDC and the city, I believe that the two agenda items on the CDC hiring should be postponed until July 11th. Council meeting, at which time I would expect the council would have the necessary information to make the appropriate decision." Thank you. So that is from Suzanne. I've just got one question. When are you looking to have your gentleman start?
Our goal was July 3rd. The 4th is a holiday, and that would provide him time with a quiet office to get his feet on the ground and kind of get a feel for the office itself, and we're just, we're ready to get started with this. You know, we've been, it's been too long, it's been a hard, it's been a big challenge for us. We're very excited about it, and any of the details that we're talking about, we're looking forward to providing, but we've done our due diligence, and we've spent our time as a board representing what we're, we were asked to do, and I think we've done a very well job of it.
So, with today, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday left in the week, and Monday of next week, the week before he's to start on, you said the 3rd? So we have the 3rd, so 3rd. So we've got three days. Could we, could we forward Julie to address your issues? Forward Julie the agreement, have her run through it, so that everything's happy-go-lucky?
It's my understanding that you have hired Rodney, which I have no objection to, that you have already done it. So it's, it's not an issue of whether you hire him or not. The issue is the other, that we would like more information regarding this. So I don't see that it would make a difference since we already know who the employee is, and that, you said earlier that you had already decided and hired him. So, all we're asking is time to see the background information and review it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I was, I felt that, and I don't know exactly, but that the city council, he wasn't officially hired until city council voted him in, so...
You have, I have the bylaws, and you do have the authority to...
You have the authority, but at this point in time, you do not want him to be a CDC employee, we prefer to have him be a city employee, because we can't offer benefits at the CDC. We'd have to go outside and get third-party insurance, which we then could not afford, and be competitive with that offer. That's the reason why we prefer to have the administrative duties handled by the city as far as employment's concerned. So if we're gonna hire him to the city by the 3rd...
So that would be with any, anyone that you hired, though? I mean, that would be any of the hiring process.
Mayor, the agreement that's sitting in your packet was reviewed by legal, was prepared by legal. So if there's any concerns from legal, they haven't been raised since your package was sent to you.
This concern I have is, Jay, Friday, June... Friday, June the 23rd, which was when the packets went out. And it is from our attorney, if you would like to see it. I assume you got a copy of it?
I'm stating the fact that legal has reviewed and prepared the agreements.
And to back up just a little bit, Mr. Flynn, as far as funding those, though the city's going to write checks, they're going to be reimbursed for, for all the money. In other words, CDC is going to be using its assets to pay your, your director?
Yes, and we'll be benefiting from the benefits being provided at a lower cost to us by utilizing the city services, which was a big part of this, in addition to all of the financial accounting that goes on with having an employee because the city already has those services available. We felt like this was the best use of our budget. We did go through the budget and come up with a number that is within our budget to finish this year. And then we're going to be in the process of budgeting for next year. So we took into account the, you know, the funds available in the budget this year and...
And I assume you're being billed for the legal work that the attorney does, his states and the bylaws that you will be...
Yes, thank you. On top of that, the concern I would have from my side is the tax person is, if we hired Rodney separately first as a CDC employee, you'd be getting a W-2 from the CDC. And then later on, if he became a city employee, you'd be getting a second W-2 from the city, basically for the same position. On top of that, and we have the requirement of handling all the administrative duties to make sure the taxes, taxes, registration is being handled, all those kind of things.
Well, is there a motion? We're, we're...
I'm standing here. Does anyone care to make a motion regarding this idea?
I have one thing to say. I'm on the CDC board and when we came up to this decision, we were all unified. As this, as Colin said, this is, this is the right man for the job. We thought we had addressed all of the issues. We, some of us were, have been to some of the EDC meetings and have heard some of the issues that they have with their employee slash city employee as the director there. And I was at the EDC meeting last night and witnessed some of those problems. And they stem from her being a city employee, even though she's supposed to be reporting to the EDC board. And without going into any detail, I think we need to have this hammered out before we take him on because I don't want to subject him to that to where he gets in there and two weeks later, he says, "I'm not messing with this." You know, this is for his protection, it's for the CDC board's protection, it's for the city's protection. So I think, you know, we know that this is the man. We know that we're going to hire him as soon as we get these issues ironed out, which if it takes two weeks, I hope that's okay. You know, if we can get it approved at the July 11th regular council meeting, I sure hope it doesn't jeopardize your, your employment. Okay? I mean, we'll keep it as quiet as we can. But that would be my recommendation.
Is that a motion?
If I may, the big problem, I think, stemmed from the fact that in effect, the EDC employee director had two supervisors, the city and the EDC board, or the EDC board chairman. Now, I think that's already, it's already been decided that the EDC board director only has one supervisor now, and that's, that's the board or the chairman of the board. And the city no longer supervises. Is that, is that a fair statement?
It is.
All right. And so is that how you intend to do things for the CDC?
That's, that's the agreement that we went in with the city. I mentioned that, you know, the EDC was first in to do this and it was a teething exercise and there were things that could not be foreseen. Everybody's trying to put forth their best effort here and things that occurred happened. And we learned from our mistakes that what's happened to the EDC, we watched, everybody's witnessed. And so our agreement is, they're revised agreement that puts the, all the management responsibility on the board, which we thought would take care of these issues. If there's additional issues that are happening with that agreement that we could potentially become victims of or be a part of, I shouldn't say victims because all of us are just trying to come up with the best business partnership here. So, you know, it's just, if those are, if that's the case, you know, we want to know about it and work our way and assist in how we can to not be a part of that and try to iron this out.
Did you ask me, did you have something else? I thought you put your hand. Oh, I thought you had another question.
Well, my, my concern was, yes, the EDC revised their agreement. And I am going to go into a little detail here. When questions were risen, they were referred or not answered because the answer, the reason given was because she was a city employee. Okay? That is on the record from last time. That's what I don't want us to be caught up in, too. So if there's any risk of that, I want it to be gone. You know, I want this to be clean, concise, defined, and everything, you know, like we say, all i's dotted, t's crossed. So that's why... So I guess that would be a motion that we, would that be tabled until the regular council meeting on July 11th? So that we can gather the correct information to make the right decision. I mean, the city, the citizens are going to make which man we want, we're going to hire him, but to make sure all the issues are cleaned up, that's, that's the reason to make that motion.
All right, we have a motion to, to table this and put this decision off until the regular council meeting, and we have a second. All in favor, tabling this? We have two in favor. All opposed? Two opposed. The vote is a tie. Ms. Crowell is not present, and so that means that I get to cast the vote that breaks the tie. And I, I vote against putting this off. I would like to make the decision. And so, is there a motion?
Can we talk a little bit more? Going through this agreement again, this is agreement between the CDC and the city, right? Entirely integrated agreement between the CDC and the city regarding the director position. So this agreement is between the CDC and the city, not your individual, the city. City falls under the employment of the city, city of Van Alstine, right? Do I do that? Can we go there? Okay. So says CDC is going to reimburse us for him. There's nowhere, the only place in here that says the city can terminate the individual is because of suspended contract without administration notice for not appropriation of funds for the position is subject to annual budgetary approval of city law. So that's the only reason, yes, we have to, yes, the city council has to agree on who we hire and of course who we terminate, but this is between us and the CDC. And this just says, we don't have, to me, I interpret it as you will be controlling your director and his actions, therein too, you're just utilizing the buying power of the city for healthcare benefits and to make a competitive price. That's, that's it.
Correct.
So we get the benefit of y'all having a director. Y'all get the benefit of buying power. But y'all control it. There's no worry in this agreement that I see that we have authority to hire and fire him. Right? Which is, which is not fine with it because I believe this separates us from, from what you were saying with the EDC and the issue that you were raised there.
There has to be a change in the bylaws because in the bylaws, we do have some...
Yes, thank you.
And they have not changed personal...
Correct. So we could throw something on the agenda for the July 11th meeting to amend the bylaws to supplement or committee employees utilizing buying power of the city benefits. It's no, it's no different than, I guess, if you're going to book pine concierge medicine.
Then so is there a motion to take the action necessary, who's already hired, to take the action necessary hiring a community development corporation director and the city entering into an interlocal agreement to VACDC related to funding such position? Do I have a motion to approve that here?
I'll make the motion. I think we'll point a discussion on that. So we're looking at, whereas the CDC administrative assistant shall be hired and supervised. To me, I also see on foot resolution, all those types of things under the item of supervised, that they're taking on those roles and responsibilities. So I'll make a motion that would...
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor? Two in favor, all opposed? Two opposed. Once again, there's a tie. And to break the tie, I'm in favor of approval of item number three. So we want item number four, consider and take any action necessary regarding hiring a community development corporation administrative assistant, different job, administrative assistant, and the city entering into an interlocal agreement with VACDC related to funding such position. And I think probably the arguments for and against are most likely the same. Does anyone have any commentary? Any questions or comments on this one?
Is there? So what my previous question about roles and responsibilities, I just wanted to give a little clarification on administrative assistant responsibility.
Yeah, one of the things that we found in the previous arrangement was that our employee was really bogged down with administrative duties and was unable to proactively go and be the face of the CDC and bring in businesses, like we talked about, being such a big importance with our, our job at the CDC. And we don't want to set the, our next employee, our director, up with the same challenges. So we have an administrative assistant that we also had a job posting for with the same timing as our director. And the job duties provide part-time administrative support to the Van Alstine Community Development Corporation Board of Directors and the Community Development Director. Duties include general clerical, receptionist, and project-based work. Must project a professional image through business casual dress and proper etiquette. Individual is in this position must be self-motivated, discreet, and able to maintain confidentiality. So we really are trying to put, we feel like we've put together the ultimate team to really take advantage of the growth that's coming to Van Alstine, really seek the type of companies that the citizens would like to see here without dropping the ball on parks projects and shade programs that are so important for the families that already live here with children, and not to mention the grant opportunities that the state has. We don't want to let anything fall through the cracks and with all the growth that's headed this way, we feel like the administrative assistant is going to be very important to allow the director to really go out there and...
Assistant already been hired, too?
Through the, the same process as the director. I mean, I was of the impression that it had to be an ultimate vote by the city council before it was official, but I don't think they've been given a, a letter, a note. So we're really waiting for this city council meeting to make it official.
To further explain, the administrative assistant is part-time, limited hours, does not require benefits, so therefore it's different in that regard to where she's not going to be a city employee, she's going to be employed at the CDC. Right? No, she shouldn't be a city employee.
Yes.
Because, because why? The exact city rate that you need to... You don't want... No, she doesn't. She doesn't need benefits. You don't want that person doing her own payroll, taxes, and everything else that sort of separate you. Do you think that you're in with, on top of that, you have employees of the CDC, one city, and a W-2 from the city, one city, one from the CDC? But if she's kind of, she's just going to be a 1099. You don't want to give her 1099. You don't want to go there. As a tax person, I wouldn't do that to my worst enemy. No, she didn't. She doesn't have benefits, does she? No. No, she did not have, not a 10, not a 10 hours a week. She's normally a full-time employee, so she would be required to receive the benefits.
It's the same, Teddy, it's the same agreement because the agreement is just for reimbursement of the employee and the city.
Yes, she, she does, I was thinking, she could have the same benefits. It does not say in here that she is part-time.
Officers will work for less than 90 now, if you're worried. Section 3, city obligations.
This might change the discretion.
I guess it leaves it a little bit bookish in case the workload gets to the point, city grows, you have that same person placed where eventually, if they are full-time, they can't get those things, yours now, whatever, whenever the work arrives.
And on the flip side of that, if, you know, right out of the chute, there's going to be a lot of work to get caught up and, and get back to a good, solid, proactive foundation if we determine that things aren't moving. I mean, the market's changing, but with a part-time, we can go either way with that if we find that she's not needing to spend as much time, the director can take on some of those roles and, you know, so, you know, there's review periods that we're going to be having with our employees as we move forward as well. I mean, this is, this is new for us, too, to have two employees. And we, again, are all very aware of the fact that we're spending taxpayers' money, which is what our budget is going to look like. And we're, we're trying to be the best stewards that we can of that. So we've taken all that into consideration and that's true. If, if time comes and there's more load needed, we can address that at that time or vice versa.
Mr. Flynn? I'm sorry, I know you, obviously, a question, did you, did you make a motion?
I did not.
Okay. Is there more discussion? Any more questions? Or I would entertain a motion regarding issue number four. I don't know. It's a motion to approve?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a second. All in favor? We have two in favor, all opposed. Once again, the vote is split, it's a tie vote, and I will vote in favor of taking action necessary regarding hiring a CDC administrative assistant and the city entering, entering into an interlocal agreement with Van Alstine CDC related to funding such position. And so the motion carries. And the next item is adjournment. Motion to approve. And the next item is adjournment. Motion to adjourn. All right. We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second. All in favor? All right. It's unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone.